The City Council meeting to order. The seven one.
Yes.
Start with the pledge of allegiance.
Alden Johnson.
Here.
Alden Matoya.
Here.
Alden Rutherford.
Here.
Alden Fairwall.
Here.
Alden McGee.
Here.
Alden Carr.
Here.
Alden Rowe.
Here.
Seven nine zero.
Presentation of the general proceedings, unless there's any objection, we can do them all at once. Is there any objection? I mean, a motion for approving A, B, C, and D for September eleventh. Committee of the whole, September twenty-third, City Council, September twenty-third, public hearing for the bonds, twenty-third, public hearing number two for the bonds. Is there a motion? Motion Alden McGee, second Alden Fairwell on the question.
I just want to give you. For the City Council meeting that. You.
Lights, please.
The Alder Valley.
Which one was that?
We can add.
City Council. Yeah.
I'm making notes. Thank you.
You, anything else? But please do the roll call.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Rutherford.
Aye.
Alden Fairwall.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Rowe.
Aye.
Mayor Blado.
Aye.
Public comment, as a reminder, the public comment period is not a time for dialogue. Purpose of the public comment period is for the mayor and all of the cities to receive input from their community. It is in fact a one-way communication to the city council. The city's administration and department heads are available for discussions after the meeting. I'd also like to apologize when we have no air conditioning, with work ongoing with the road, the units have been removed until the Europe is put on. So I apologize for the plan with a lot of reservations on the agenda, so. Public comment? Is there any public comment?
This is a story on, good evening, Mayor, and also to our City Council. I'll be Clint's representing Mission Covenant Church. Just wanted to let you know, we're going to be having a Pink Over event, cancer wellness event, and that's scheduled for the date of October the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, times ten thirty a.m. service for Sunday, and it's our Awareness Sunday. So we'd like to invite everyone in the community to come out and be present, present, and help us support families that have had, members that have had cancer or cancer survivors, and just to be there for them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Barton. I'm a community organizer at Progress Center for Independent Living. Progress Center is a nonprofit, non-residential disability rights center in Blue Island, staffed by people with disabilities that provides services and supports for people with disabilities throughout suburban Cook County. The Blue Island Disability Committee is a group of residents, employees, town officials, staff of the Progress Center, and those who support greater disability inclusion and accessibility, so that Blue Island is a place that welcomes all of us and empowers us to be our best. Thank you to all who work on the Blue Island Disability Committee. Our work together creates new opportunities for people with disabilities to be independent, self-reliant, creative, confident, and successful in pursuing self-determined goals. When people with disabilities reach a significant increase in quality of life, all members of society experience greater happiness, accomplishments, choices, and connections to all of the necessary building blocks that make our neighborhoods, schools, and homes, our social services, our infrastructure, and our workplaces, our cultural life, our businesses, public transit, and our faith organizations, and our civic organizations, where we find a special pride and joy to be members of. Disability employment is not optional, it's essential to cultivating democracy. We sincerely wish to thank Mayor Blado, the City Council, and all the city staff of the outstanding community of Blue Island. Keep on breaking down barriers to self-determination and happy disability employment awareness.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Doug Taylor, I'm a CIU seventy-three organizer, and I work with the custodial maintenance unit along with Ricky who's here as well. Wait, Ricky. Any from our unit, please wave, so maybe they know you're here. A lot of folks came tonight, they came last month, and they came again tonight because this is a really important situation we're in with the current superintendent and the assistant superintendent. So last month, you heard lots of their stories, and they shared them, shared the challenges they've had in school district one thirty, and since then, conditions have not improved. So I'm here tonight to talk about the disrespectful conditions that continue under Superintendent Colleen McKay and Assistant Superintendent Carrie Tish. One, they spoke of last time was the racist workplace practices. We have workers who are told they cannot speak Spanish, and that continues. Anti-union attacks, we have management that's blocked fair representation, a lack of response for some of our information requests as we prepare for bargaining. There's been some delay as we try to set up some meetings to handle bargaining this year. Management is also harassing union stewards, and we're also, we've got some, some reports of some anti-union comments that are made at new higher orientations, so those are some things we're trying to track down as well. And lastly, we, our members have asked for some safety training, so that they know what to do in a lockdown, so they can help keep our kids safe, help keep the community safe, and those have been denied each time they've requested for that training. So the workplace practices, the anti-union attacks, and, and just not caring for the safety of their employees. Please help us raise awareness. Many of you already reached out, made some very positive comments last time about what you heard. So tonight, I mean, last week, last, the end of last week, we started a petition drive, and we will invite all of you to sign, including the audience, we'll have those petitions around after the meeting for folks who wish to sign the petition. We have a school board meeting next Tuesday, the twenty-first, so we would ask for your attendance and support there if you could speak to the school board. Let them know that it's in their control to fix this, to fix the situation, to remove the superintendent and the assistant superintendent from this situation, so that we can make a positive progress in this, change a disrespectful climate into a respectful one, because that's the only goal, to have a respectful climate for our folks to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Steve Warren, I'm the new pastor of Salem Lutheran Church on the corner of Maplewood High, and I just came to say thank for your quick response and your concern regarding the sidewalk around our church. Work has started, and the congregation says thank.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Okay, good evening, so I've come to kind of touch on a couple of the public comments that were already made. And please excuse me, as I may be a little emotional during this. But I'm gonna be cool, you got that. Okay, so my name is Molly Sexton, and I have proudly served as a teacher in the District one thirty for the previous nineteen years. I wear many hats, I'm a mom, a wife, a coach, and I'm a fierce MS ambassador. I recently founded an nonprofit called The Music Movement to raise awareness funds for MS. Our very first event raised fifty thousand dollars with Grammy-winning artists to help others living with this disease. But tonight, I'm not here to talk about that success. I'm here because on August tenth, twenty-twenty-five, I was pushed to resign from the district I've given my entire career to totally due to my disability. I stand in solidarity with the local Union seventy-three, who has brought forward claims of discrimination and retaliation by District Administrators Carrie Tish and Colleen McKay. I'm living proof that those claims are real. The picture that was handed to you is a picture that speaks a thousand words. It is the final goodbye to my nineteen-year career in Blue Island, and that is how I was treated. Nineteen years of belongings, held hostage and left in the rain. Sorry. I no longer have union backing, and it's not because I don't believe in it, as we are a union family, but it's because so many teachers who are our union fear retaliation. They have the fear of speaking up and the fear of losing their jobs. That is the culture that's been created in District one thirty. For nearly two decades, I poured my heart and my students into this community, I'm sorry, I poured my heart into my students in this community. Not only will you find, would you have found me teaching eighth grade math, but also coaching sports, leading clubs. You'd find me at the McDonald's drive-through serving food for an informed fundraiser I organized that would go directly to my students. You would find me hiring students' families for landscaping at my own house, for catering at my own party, and former students working on my career, or, sorry, thank you, former students working on my cars. I did my best to support the local businesses and the families that I grew to love. My students knew my classroom was a place of energy and care, whether it was the Friday song here at every Friday, five-day celebrations or math lessons that turned into dance breaks. Blue Island became a part of me. My own kids soon joined in on the school events, and the city became part of our family. And none of that was ever even meant to be mentioned, it was just something that happened through the years because I believe in the power of community. But over the years, I've watched five superintendents come and go, and with this current administration, I've seen more good teachers leave than ever before. It used to be the pay being the major reasons people moved on, but now it's teachers that have spent years in Blue Island that are gone, all due to the current administrators. And it doesn't stop at teachers, it's started with secretaries, custodians, safety and maintenance staff, all driven out or silenced. Morale's at an all-time low. This is not just a teacher problem, it's a student problem. Every time a good teacher leaves, our kids lose, every time a good employee leaves, our kids lose. Every time leadership chooses power over compassion, the community suffers. Meanwhile, administrative expansion continues unchecked. District one thirty has now has twelve directors compared to the four to seven neighboring districts, yet our teachers remain some of the lowest paid in the area. Resources are going to be cr- crass, sorry, you know what I'm trying to say, not classrooms. I've always taught my students to be upstanders, not bystanders in our eighth-grade curriculum. That is why I'm standing here today, not just for myself, but for them. I'm asking this as community leaders to pay attention, please help protect the integrity of your schools. Ask questions about staffing decisions being made, please look into the Board of Education and the decisions they are making. I have reached out to them many times for this own situation, and I've only heard back once saying I won't hear the, from them due to litigation. I understand they didn't do this, but they had the power to fix it and help before it had to go so far, but they all stood there and watched as my career was taken from me over a disability. They, I watched them approve nine building and grounds, custodial or safety terminations just from June, just from August twenty, of twenty-twenty-four to June of twenty-twenty-five. I've seen two settlements, one being an exact complaint from, of retaliation and discrimination. And then I also asked to look as why so many teachers are leaving and demand transparency. I lost my position because I needed an elevator, a basic ADA accommodation, and I was denied it. Instead, they resigned me to a building without one, called me unfit for duty, and later refused to hire me for a position I was fully qualified for. But I'm not here for sympathy, as I've been tearing up this whole time, I'm sorry, I'm here for change. The students and family of Blue Island deserve better, the teachers deserve to feel safe and valued again, and our schools deserve leaders who build community and not fear. Please be the eyes and ears this district needs and see the change and be the change. Thank you.
Need a public comment? Need a public comment? If not, moving on to new business, proclamation for National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, the United States Congress established October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, N D E A M, to raise awareness of the employment needs and contributions of those people with disabilities. Whereas National Disability Employment Awareness Month is observed annually in October to recognize the contributions of people with disabilities to the economy and workplaces, and to reaffirm the commitment to equal opportunity for all citizens. Whereas, according to the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, more than one in four, twenty-eight point seven percent of adults in the United States have some type of disability. Whereas the city of Blue Island recognizes the significant contributions people with disabilities have made to the city of Blue Island, community, and workforce. Whereas the city understands the importance of disability inclusion and regular reinforcement of that commitment to ensure equal opportunity for all citizens. Whereas the city values and appreciates the talents of all those individuals with disabilities contributing to the success of our Blue Island community. I, Fred Bellato, Mayor for the city of Blue Island, do hereby claim October twenty-five as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Is there a motion to put into the record, motion of Alden Johnson, second Alden Fairwell on the favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Man, do you want the picture?
Yes, everybody, and then I'll, I'll still stand next to you.
Next, we have a motion to approve consent decree in case number twenty-two-five, MS nine six six five, regarding October the significant building issues that we settled on, then remediating. Is there a motion? First of all, Montorius, second Alden Johnson, on the question. Question, Alden Fairwell?
I, I'm just not familiar with this, so I could go over the background. I noticed that there's eleven citations that are people that are being voided, I guess, and I guess my question is, isn't it, I'm curious if I'm generally a big, can go ahead and do it and do it, so I'm just wondering.
Well, we took him to court to sue him.
Right.
And I believe there was a tenant there that might be impacted, and he's going to, he has a certain timeline of post-identity permits, if not, we get the demo filled.
All right, all right, thank you.
You have other questions? Not clerk, please do the roll call.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Rutherford.
Aye.
Alden Fairwall.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Rowe.
Aye.
Mayor Blado.
Aye.
All right, next, we have a motion for approval of payroll dated October tenth, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-one cents. Is there a motion? Alden Carr is our second, Alden McGee on the question. But please do the roll call.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Rutherford.
Aye.
Alden Fairwall.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Rowe.
Aye.
Seven nine zero.
There is, under B, motion to approve accounts payable dated October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twelve cents. Is there a motion? Alden McGee is our second. Alden Rutherford on the question, Alden Fairwell.
Thank you, just a quick question here, one I'm not entirely familiar with on page seven. First, the bottom, one oh seven, five, one oh seven, seven, by the H S Bureau of Municipal Operations. Two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars roughly, I, I guess this has to do with the Medicaid, ambulance tips that aren't covered by Medicaid, but I'd like a further explanation about.
Martin, I think it's for the ambulance, right?
Yes, this is the ambulance, so this is the G E N T. This is something that we do on an annual basis, there actually will be one more, they were actually behind with sending us the invoices. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Or please do the roll call.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Rutherford.
Aye.
Alden Fairwall.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Rowe.
Aye.
Aye.
Seven eyes, Your Honor.
Carries under C, a resolution for the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, setting the date, which is Halloween, October thirty-first, at three thirty hours, three to seven P M, in the City of Blue Island for this year of twenty twenty-five, and appropriate streets to be closed, just like last year. Is there a motion? Motion of Alderman McGee, second of Alderman Johnson on the question. Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alderman Johnson?
Aye.
Alderman Montoya?
Aye.
Alderman Ruthenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Ferron?
Aye.
Alderman McGee?
Aye.
Alderman Carr?
Aye.
Alderman Roll?
Aye.
Seven eyes, Your Honor.
D, an ordinance for the City of Blue Island, County, Illinois designated, address twenty-five, twenty-one, Baroque Avenue, also known as hundred and twenty-seventh Street, as historical landmark. Is there a motion? First of Alderman Johnson, second of Alderman Carr on the question. Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alderman Johnson?
Aye.
Alderman Montoya?
Aye.
Alderman Ruthenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Ferron?
Aye.
Alderman McGee?
Aye.
Alderman Carr?
Aye.
Alderman Roll?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
Motion carries. The next is a resolution for the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois commemorating the seventy-fifth anniversary of the destruction of Eisenhower High School in the City of Blue Island. Is there a motion? Ruthenberg, second of Alderman Montoya, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll turn it over to Director Rita, who's going to read the proclamation.
Aye, this is the first time tonight, and I would like to welcome everyone. And I see we have our superintendent, our principal, our assistant principal, we have school board member, Kian Stantello, we have associate principal, Juanita Lorenz, and Caleb Artest, assistant principal. And I know we have many students here that have joined us tonight, and we have some teachers. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Um, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution, bear with me. Whereas, the city of Blue Island emerged as an important trading and cultural center in the mid-nineteenth century. And whereas, Blue Island offered educational opportunities to its residents as early as eighteen forty-five, establishing a strong foundation for learning and community advancement. And whereas, high school education in Blue Island began in eighteen ninety-two at the newly constructed Seymour School at New Street and Maple Avenue. And whereas, in nineteen seventeen, a larger school was built on Maple Avenue, known as Blue Island Community High School, or Old Main. That's where I went. With athletic fields developed with the Blue Island Park District at what is now Memorial Park. And whereas, the Blue Island Community High School District, number two eighteen, was formally organized in nineteen twenty-seven to meet the community's growing educational needs. And whereas, the city expanded land, was acquired at Sacramento Avenue and Baroque Avenue for a second campus with construction begun in nineteen fifty. And whereas, the new high school was dedicated in nineteen fifty-one with Dwight D. Eisenhower, then-president of Columbia University and future President of the United States, serving as keynote speaker. And whereas, in nineteen sixty-two, the Sacramento Avenue campus was formally named Dwight D. Eisenhower High School in his honor. And whereas, the year twenty twenty-five marks the seventy-fifth anniversary of the construction of the Eisenhower High School campus, a milestone in the educational history of the city of Blue Island and a proud reflection of the community's enduring commitment to excellence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor Fred Bellato and City Council of the City of Blue Island hereby recognize and commemorate the seventy-fifth anniversary of the construction of the Eisenhower High School campus and extend their congratulations and gratitude to High School District, number two eighteen, its faculty, students, alumni, and community members for their contributions to its lasting legacy.
Let's see, you can go sit down with that guy. Good evening, Mayor Bellato, members of the Bellato and the City Council, distinguished guests. My name is Benjamin Blakely, and I have the honor of serving as the principal at Dwight D. Eisenhower High School. This evening, I'm joined by our superintendent, Dr. Josh Barron, our board member, Ms. Cantello, our associate principal, Juanita Lorenz, assistant principal over teaching and learning, Ms. Marquez, Ms. Michaela Marquez, and two of our outstanding teachers, Ms. Nancy Perez and Karina Alatorre, both who are proud members and proud alumni of Eisenhower High School, who continues to give back to the school and community that helped shape them. What makes this even especially meaningful is that we are celebrating the birthday of President Dwight D. Eisenhower, the namesake of our school, whose legacy and leadership, service and unity comes to inspire us. In addition, this year marks our seventy-fifth anniversary of the building we proudly call home, a milestone that reflects decades of learning, achievement, and community partnership. On behalf of the entire Eisenhower School family, I want to extend our deepest appreciation to the city of Blue Island for being an exceptional partner, supporter, and collaborator. Your continued presence at our events, your commitment to public safety, and your dedication to the success of our students have strengthened the connection between our school and this great city. Mayor Bellato, your leadership and this council's commitment to community partnerships have made a lasting impact on the lives of our students and families. Together, we continue to build a city and a school that proudly serves one another. It is my great honor this evening to present this plaque to you, Mayor Bellato, and to the city of Blue Island as a symbol of gratitude. The plaque simply reads, "Presented to the city of Blue Island for your support and service to the community of Dwight D. Eisenhower, dated October fourteenth." Thank you, Mayor Bellato. Thank you, entire City Council, for your partnership and for helping us make Blue Island a place where education and community thrive together. Thank you.
We've had a very good relationship with District two eighteen as mayor, working with Dr. Baron, and then likely with the principal. Well, presenting a resolution is not as fancy as the plaque. Let's go, sure, it's the house, wants to join in the picture. Where are we going up here? All the guys, we're here, we get the whole house up.
Next, we have another resolution. Resolution for the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois honoring Block Thirty-Seven Neighborhood Watch Group for twenty-five years of service and dedication to the community. Is there a motion? Alderman McGee, second of Alderman Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alderman, if you want to reach us?
Resolution honoring Block Thirty-Seven Neighborhood Watch Group loved for twenty-five years of service and dedication to our community. Whereas, Block Thirty-Seven Neighborhood Watch Group was established in the year twenty two thousand by a group of committed residents.
Come use my.
Alright, there, I can hear myself now, okay, alright. Whereas, the Block Thirty-Seven Neighborhood Watch Group was established in the year two thousand by a group of committed residents united in their goal of improving public safety, fostering community pride, and enhancing the quality of life in the city of Blue Island. And whereas, the founding members, Willie Scott, captain, Rachelle Orozco, co-captain, Margarita Humble, board member, Johnny Orozco, junior watch group captain, Bessie Tate Jenkins, Sandra Phillips, and Barbara Jenkins. Ms. Thompson is not out here. Uh, you need to be out here. Uh, worked together to build a foundation of neighborhood cooperation and civic responsibility. And whereas, in two thousand twenty, I'm sorry, two thousand and one, Nancy Thompson joined the group and became captain. There it is, there it is, there it is. Leading beautification projects such as the planting and maintenance of flowers at the metro station berm located at one hundred and nineteenth and Vincent's. And whereas, the group grew with the addition of Juan Orozco, Robert Thompson the second, Ayesha Orozco, secretary in two thousand and two, and Susan Zirk in two thousand and five. Whereas, whose creativity and volunteer spirit strengthened the organization's efforts. And whereas, through advocacy and action, the Block Thirty-Seven Neighborhood Watch Group championed numerous improvements, including upgraded sidewalks and curbs, flood relief, coordination with state rep Robert Rida, and community safety initiatives that resulted in the permanent closure of problem establishments. And whereas, the group members have been recognized for their exceptional leadership, with Nancy Thompson receiving the Fred Hampton Scholarship Fund Image Award in two thousand and six, and the Rose Park Award in twenty eighteen, and Rachelle Orozco receiving the Rosa Parks Award in twenty nineteen. Honors reflecting their positive influence and dedication to justice and equality. And whereas, co-captain Rachelle Orozco made history as the first African-American woman to serve as president of the Blue Island Library Board, continuing the group's legacy of community leadership. And whereas, Block Thirty-Seven Neighborhood Watch Group organized annual events and united neighbors and celebrated culture, including Black Culture Night, the Youth Festival, and barbecue, and numerous drives providing food, toys, and school supplies for local residents. And whereas, the group continues, continued to innovate, developing emergency preparedness plans, offering virtual programs through the Blue Island Public Library, and maintaining its mission of service even during challenging times. And whereas, after twenty-five years of continuous service to the city of Blue Island, the members of the Block Thirty-Seven Neighborhood Watch Group retired in September twenty twenty-five, leaving a lasting impact of unity, pride, and civic engagement for future generations to follow. And whereas, the mayor and the city council of the city of Blue Island wish to express our deepest appreciation to the Block Thirty-Seven Neighborhood Watch Group for their commitment, leadership, and unwavering dedication to the betterment of our community. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, do hereby commend, honor, and the Block Thirty-Seven Neighborhood Watch Club for its twenty-five years of exemplary service to the residents of Blue Island, and extend their heartfelt gratitude to all past, present members for their invaluable contribution to public safety, civic pride, and neighborhood unity. Be it therefore resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be presented to the members of Block Thirty-Seven Neighborhood Watch Club as a symbol of the city's appreciation and respect for their enduring legacy of service.
Yeah, we do want to thank everyone. Yeah, we would like to thank everyone for supporting us over the years. It's, what would you say, a massive support in Blue Island. Anytime that you take a project to improve the community, you have a support system in the community that helped. And it was wonderful, and a lot of the city councilmen, city officials, they backed us up, city and state. So we're going to say thank you to everyone in the community.
Thank you, Mayor, and to the city council, and to the community for the years of support. We had a great ride. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to say, and I really appreciate all the work that everyone in Block Thirty-Seven has done, but you, Ms. Thompson, with whom I served on City Council, you are the kind of troublemaker that every city is.
Well, I want to thank you, Grandma. You're a great guy. It was a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
Next, moving on. Um, I can do the, let the brace next to the line. Alright. On Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty-five, at approximately twelve thirty-one A M. Blue Island Police Department detectives, was it A M. or P M.?
A M.
P M., alright. Blue Island Police Department detectives received a block notification of a felony vehicle traveling westbound on hundred and twenty-seventh Street, passing Irving Avenue. The vehicle in question was identified as a silver twenty-twenty Jeep Grand Cherokee with an L I registration. Both the vehicle and the driver was wanted for homicide by the Chicago Police Department. Detective disseminated the information to Blue Island Police Department Patrol Division and Poseon Police Department. A Blue Island police officer observed the vehicle at hundred and twenty-seventh and Western Avenue. The officer confirmed the registration matched the wanted vehicle and tactically followed the Jeep. The officer relayed direction of travel until assisting officers and detectives were in position to conduct a high-risk felony traffic stop of a vehicle at a location that was safe for the officers and the public. Officers conducted the high-risk felony stop at hundred and thirty-first and Kedzie. The subject wanted for murder was placed into custody without incident. Both the vehicle and the alleged murderer were turned over to the Chicago Police Department. Therefore, the Blue Island Police Department would like to recognize the officers involved and award them a unit citation for team effort under extreme conditions, including all participating staff members who supported the departmental operations, distinguished themselves, the protection of life and property. So we got a couple officers here, more than a couple. Just going to read the names. Sergeant Matthew Lavell. Detective Eduardo Gonzalez. Detective Eduardo Gonzalez. Corporal Miguel Meja.
Mahi. That butcher?
Mahia. Commander Dennis Sepacy. Officer Mayra Diaz Rodriguez. Detective Matthew Polito. Officer Joseph Doolan. Officer Eric Nava Miramantes. All these officers were involved in a stop that did not have any loss of life or property damage in the city. So we're offering a commendation. Chief, would you like to do the honors?
All right, you guys, come on, get a little closer.
Family time.
Dennis, go ahead. Tonight, we are honored to be celebrating quite a few members of our department. As you can see here, they're obviously all dressed in their finest. Specifically, we're going to celebrate some accomplishments, both longevity of the career and the starting of new career. So first, we'd like to bring up your Sergeant Anthony Cirillo, who's been with us for about nineteen years today, actually, to celebrate his promotion. It's my area, Bill. Bill.
Yeah.
You're up.
Cirillo, is it Cirillo or Cirillo? Cirillo.
Yes.
Raise your right hand. I, Anthony Cirillo, have been appointed to the office of police sergeant in the city of Blue Island, county of Cook. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution for the state of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of sergeant in our city. To the best of your ability. Stone. I've known Dave for a long time. Right for this?
You nice.
Raise your right hand. I, David Stone.
I, David Stone.
Have been appointed to the office of sergeant in the city of Blue Island, county of Cook. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution for the state of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties the office of sergeant. Best of your ability.
Best of mine.
Congratulations. Miramantes, is that what you're saying, or? Raise your right hand. I, Eric Nava Miramantes.
I, Eric Nava Miramantes.
Have been appointed to the office of police officer
Have been appointed to the office of police officer.
In the city of Blue Island, county of Cook. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution for the state of Illinois. That I faithfully discharge the duties of police officer to the best of your ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Bruno Ortiz Trochi. Raise your right hand.
I, Bruno Ortiz Trochi.
Have been appointed to the office of police officer in the city of Blue Island, county of Cook. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution for the state of Illinois. That I faithfully discharge the duties of police officer to the best of your ability. Congratulations. Daniel O'Brien. Raise your right hand. I, Daniel O'Brien.
I, Daniel O'Brien.
Have been appointed to the office of police officer
Have been appointed to the office of police officer.
In the city of Blue Island,
City of Blue Island.
County of Cook. Do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution for the state of Illinois.
Constitution for the state of Illinois.
That you will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Best of your ability.
Best of my ability.
Congratulations. Jason Laporta. Raise your right hand. I, Jason Laporta. Have been appointed to the office of police officer in the city of Blue Island, county of Cook. Do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution for the state of Illinois. And you will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer. The best of your ability.
The best of my ability.
Congratulations. Mayra Diaz Rodriguez. Did I say it correctly? Mayra. See? I refer him with the same name, and she was corrects me, so I'm hoping I'm wrong. I, Mayra Diaz Rodriguez, have been appointed to the office of police officer in the city of Blue Island, county of Cook. Do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution for the state of Illinois, that you will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer. Best of your ability. Congratulations.
All right. Resolution for the city of Blue Island, Illinois, awarding bid to the lowest responsible bidder, McGill Construction LLC, for the twenty-twenty-six pavement maintenance program. Is there a motion? A segment, Johnson. On the question.
Uh, this is a valid. I said the valid sounds.
Okay. Travis is here somewhere, I think. Give me a map next time, Travis. All right. It's all the streets that were done last year ago. Any other questions? Court, please do the roll call.
Alden Johnson.
Hi.
Alden Mathoya.
Hi.
Alden Rutherford.
Hi.
Alden Fairwell.
Hi.
Alden McGee.
Hi.
Alden Carr. Alden Rol.
Right, motion carries. H, a resolution for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing and approving the execution of an agreement binding between the city and Block Group Incorporated relating to license plate recognition technology. Is there a motion? Motion of Alden Johnson, segment, Alden Carr on the question, Alden Rol.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, um, I guess I'm near real head. With the flock cameras, and in particular, the audits being conducted by the state's attorney's office at issues of access through a data repository that we have authorized that collects the whereabouts of our residents in bulk. They don't have to be suspected of a crime. And of course, it's a powerful tool, as we heard tonight. It was helpful. That is why this council, three years ago, when we first considered this drafted comprehensive policy, had we followed that policy, one of the key provisions is monitoring external access, like the access that was given to federal law enforcement when flock released an update without full knowledge of their board of directors. In my opinion, as a professional, that alone should disqualify block from continuing business. But I just need to urge this council once again to better understand the technology that we are being asked to renew payment for.
Alden Fairwell.
Yeah, I just would like to support Alden Rol's comments. The flock cameras are an incredibly useful tool, and they're used to a great advantage by our police department in many cases. But given particularly the current political climate that we're in, I think we all appreciate the fact that our right to privacy is very important, unless we're criminals. But those of us who are law-abiding citizens need to be assured that we're doing everything we can to protect your right to due process and not to be subject of, you know, a vendetta, some kind of legal prosecution, or even a stalking. And apparently, that's really not really what's happening here, so I share Alden Rol's concerns.
Any other questions? Alden McGee.
I just want to, AI is more technology than what we've dealt with this prior. So, you know, with these advancements, I really think we need to kind of pluck down oversight as much as we can, because we have to constantly be vigilant.
Attorney, if you want to make a comment.
Well, sure. So, a lot of the controversy is initiated from the fact that ICE access block system for immigration in violation of applicable Illinois law. That's what instigated the Secretary of State of American onion. Policies that was adopted by the council are extremely important. Don't attack against these issues. My understanding is that there's no allegations that Blue Island system was accessed by ICE. There is a policy in place. The city has had discussions about this in the past, how there's been some shortcomings, but on compliance, nothing to do with ICE. But those have been corrected. In addition, flock has instituted new program, security programs in its system and the law, according to their website, is no longer committing flock ICE system. There can be no doubt, this is a powerful tool and have strong policies, and we have to do a chair, we comply with the policies. That said, the issue is the access. It's, Illinois municipalities are prohibited from cooperating in any manner with federal enforcement of immigration laws. And that's where the issue with Evan Stan and a couple of parties rise and fall.
Well, and proving it. What? You have to prove compliance, attorney.
Say your source.
Record keeping proves compliance. That's the issue. I just want to be clear. It's not an allegation of whether or not we comply, it's whether or not we have policy to prove compliance. This was my question on the vote, by the way.
Sorry, you're incorrect. But the issue, again, there's no allegations that this occurred in Blue Island. So, when your issue of the current law about secure privacy issues, federal courts firmly hold that there is no privacy rights as it relates to the exterior vehicle while on a public road. That said, they were what's called dragnet enforcement, where they're tracking you from each corner to each corner at all, obviously, the day that's problem. There's no, that is not the level that occurs, that is not the level of flock that Blue Island has one. So, at the end of the day, this, there needs to be a policy decision here, as part of the benefits of the flock. Work, work and protections put in place. Now, again, my understanding, yes, the police department in the past was not putting the case number in when they accessed the flock system. My understanding is that's been corrected. Correct. In addition, flock is put in protection. So, it is a powerful tool. And there's a lot of benefits. With this powerful tool comes a responsibility to implement strong policies and ensure compliance. And that's a question for this board and this council to decide if I can.
Well, attorney, while you're speaking, can you address why the policy we drafted three years ago, which addresses all of this, is not seen by the administration as valid? Why are we being asked to do this again?
I don't think anyone said it's not valid.
Your attorney said that this policy that we drafted was not fine. You've invited us to create new policy, so I'm asking why we would create new policy that we already have comprehensive policy.
And my attorney, part of my firm, I just said. But I'm telling you, I'm telling you that your policy, it's a good policy, and it's an enforceable policy within the city, city step. Absolutely, just as when the police department adopts all types of policies. It has the same level of validity as any other part of a policy. And I have no debate with you that it needs to be passed.
Well, I just want to note that what this really comes down to, very essentially, very importantly, is the issue of trust, the trust in our government institutions, and a trust in our rights to our privacy. And there's someone in this room, I trust, on this issue is all in the role. And so, he will be my cue.
Any other, Alden, go ahead and do the roll call.
Alden Johnson.
Hi.
Alden Mathoya.
Hi.
Alden Ruthenberg.
Hi.
Alden Fairwell.
No.
Alden McGee.
Hi.
Alden Carr.
Hi.
Alden Rol.
No.
Under I, a resolution for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, supporting a class six B real estate taxes. Motion carries. Under I, a resolution for the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, supporting a Class 6B real estate tax assessment renewal application by JT Sambal LLC, also known as Son and Shearing, for industrial facility located at 13500 Southwest Avenue. No motion? Alderman Johnson, second to five. Alderman Ruthenberg on the question. Alderman Fairwall, then Alderman McGee, Alderman Roll.
I was able to deal with this because, once again, they've asked for a little document to defer these, and just about here. Or at the table.
Make a motion on table, is there a second? Alderman Roll. We'll do a roll call table. So if your I is for tabling. No is to not to table, then we go back to the regular motion. Clerk, do a roll call to table.
Table. Alderman Johnson.
No.
Alderman Montoya. Alderman Ruthenberg.
No.
Alderman Fairwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Carr. Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Yes, okay, so it wasn't tabled?
And?
So back to the regular motion. Yeah, we didn't finish the question, as you know. He made a motion to table, so I took it for Robert's rules. I have asked for a second. So back on the question for the original motion.
This is, well, the nature of development is occupation of a man's property.
And Alderman Roll, your question next.
Yeah, just, again, you know, when we're talking about altering the tax landscape. Given how many of these tax breaks we have added, and to renew it, with no sense of what the impact to our residents is. I just, you know, doing a good urgency.
Alderman Fairwall, then Alderman Johnson, Alderman Montoya.
I'll just say that I don't know whether this is worth doing or not, because we didn't have the information in front of us. We were told, you know, we have a process. I don't know why, I don't know why we're not doing it.
So it's in the application, it's in the packet, it went through committee before, I just, we didn't put an agenda where we should have been, but it's in, we fill out the application in the, in the I met with them, I know I talked to Alderman Johnson, who's in the ward that resides there, there's eighty employees, forty of which live in town. They are in attendance, I believe, here. So Alderman Johnson, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to know that, I mean, let people know how, you know, that that business has been there for a very long time. In that section of my ward, the taxes are hard. Really, it's really high. They've been supporting this city for a very long time. Like I said, half of their workforce is Blue Island. themselves. Well, out of eighty employees, forty of them are Blue Island employees. They reach out and do help in the community as well. So, my thing was try to keep them here in business in some manner. The ladies building down the street has been out of business for I don't know how long. So has the modern rock fort. So has Monarch, all those very high, high taxable properties. That's in my ward. If I can do anything to try to help them sustain being in business without crippling the city. Understanding, a lot of the commercial property takes some of the harness off the residence property. So that's the reason why I'm voting for them to be given.
Just to clarify again, it's in the packet, they did a ten-year analysis in here. So their taxes will go up roughly from a hundred thousand to two hundred fifty thousand a year. If they continue it, it'll be frozen at a hundred with increments after that. So it's in the packet also.
No, that's not the, we have a fairly thorough process document in all of this. No, it's not. There's, I know there's questions in the document about their financial position. So we can understand, you know, where they are and why they need this. There is a document that is not being used.
All right, I'll get to the other.
And I want to say, I really appreciate, you know, Dexter, what you're saying, and I hear you. But I am done voting for these things without, I will vote no on every one of these that comes up without proper documentation.
Alderman Montoya, then Alderman McGee, then Treasury Reader. Alderman Montoya. Alderman McGee.
Again, I just, I mean, if in fact, this is an existing business already. I mean, they've been in the community for some years, right? It's probably maybe an eight, better than a six B, you know? But as this is structured and in the application, it's that's a six B. Being under abandoned property. And this is not abandoned property. So it's, I mean, it's a lot. As it says, the application. So just being on that fact alone, I can't wait for it. But if I would be more amicable to giving them tax relief.
No, no. I just say, again, if I can just chime in.
Hold on, I'm going to finish their, raising their hands. Treasury Reader had her hand up for a while.
So, if this does not, I've been on the board a long time, and I do know that that this is a tool to help keep businesses in our community. I have seen where it didn't cast and the business has left. I just want to put that on the record. And I hear what everyone is saying, and I'm not saying that that could be the case, but my question is, if this doesn't cast tonight, what could be the outcome?
The outcome might be that we would probably proper process in the future. That might be the outcome.
All right. When hold up, Mark Patasko is going to come up, then Alderman Roll, he just raises his hand.
I would just like to add that with a class eight, beating North Township is not eligible for a class eight test. Six B is the same thing as a class A, just six B is a lot of things combined. And then, Alderman Roll, comment about the impact on property residents in the area. Right now, we're collecting approximately a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars across that whole taxing bodies. If this place closes, that entire expert gets shifted on to all of the residents within North Township.
Okay, Alderman Roll. It's saying the business will close if we don't do this. We've had this exact conversation in the past, especially as regards applicability. Nobody is against using city resources to help our businesses. The conversation we've had is that the city should prepare other plans, given that the six B is very specific to Alderman Peacepoint. So again, it's not like the business sinks or swims, or we help or we don't. It is specifically that without some discussion and analysis and alternatives, we are failing our business as a city.
I'm going to call the applicant out, because he probably answers questions that we cannot. The applicant here? Please come up.
Evening, Mayor. Evening, Mayor, City Council. Happy to answer any questions. My name's Adam Johnson. I'm a representative for Son and Shearing with Sandrick Law Firm, I'm the director of economic development there. Before, before we take questions, I just want to clarify one thing, and this goes back to what Mark Patasko said. The class eight and six B are synonymous. Please don't be confused with the application that says abandoned property. That is the original request for the application. We have to put that on there. So originally, this property was abandoned prior to purchase. So the original application is for abandoned property. What we're asking for here is the continuation of the six B, which is synonymous with the class A. So it does qualify for renewal through the county rules. I understand what you're talking about here is process. We were engaged, so I don't know, understand where we're at, but we are doing some things to improve the property, and one of them is completing the sign package on that property that needs to be renewed. But going back to the forty jobs. These jobs are not minimum wage jobs. These are highly skilled jobs that we have here. You've got steel cutters in there, high protection, those types of things. So these are valuable jobs in the community. Second thing I will add here, this particular group, they did purchase a second location. It's in the suburbs here, looking for expansion. They have a lot of space there. I'm not trying to tell you one thing or another. What I'm telling you is that in the other community that they're in, they have an incentive for that property, and they can make a transfer, but that's not how you do that in the community that you're in. When you have forty jobs relocating to another community, that's tough. You may lose some of them people. So that's why they're still staying and trying to stay in this community. And with your help, they will continue to stay here and reinvest in the building.
No question, Alderman Fairwall, then Alderman Roll.
Hi, I, thank you very much. A, I want to apologize to you because you're caught in the middle of a thing that you shouldn't be caught in. It sounds like you were not provided with a document that requests financial information, other facts about your company. Is that correct?
Again, I, we provided with the information that was requested, so.
So you should, and you weren't. And that's why we have this problem tonight. So I apologize to you that you're in this position, but unfortunately, I've been asking, I mean, we have a document, I've been asking that we use it for years, and I've just, I'm not doing this anymore. So again, I apologize to you, and if circumstances were different, I would be voting in favor of this most likely, but it's frustrating.
I understand.
Yeah, I just would like to thank you again for being here and to reiterate that you have my support. I think where I want to be careful is that it is not the job of the City of Blue Island to subsidize any business model or business decisions on employment or expansion. Our help, our assistance should be predicated on the community. So, again, thank you for being here. It really is less on the merits of the case and more government bureaucracy.
Alderman McGee.
As the judge would point, the we all agree this, that's one of our objectives here. Again, it has to speak to process and to proper paperwork and the financials and processes here in the city of Florida. So I actually would like to move to it. Table it again.
I want to clarify, did they fill out the paperwork? Originally, it wasn't a committee of the whole packet.
I believe so. The entire application was provided for that.
Is that what we're here for today?
I believe the only thing that is missing is the financial documentation, which a lot of businesses are hesitant to provide because that's voiding them. And then their competition calls it void all of that financial.
That's part of the risk they take. If they run public health, they're going to have to be public. That's the app. All right, but if that, I'm sorry, if I'm saying, if that document has been provided, and I have missed it, if we could table it, and I can see that personally, that would help.
Is there a motion? Alderman, yes, for a motion to table, is there a second? Motion of Alderman Fairwall, second to roll to table. Do a roll call on a table. Yes would be to table. No would be to deny the tabling, back to the regular roll call. Same thing as before. Or do a roll call to table.
Table. Alderman Johnson?
No.
Alderman Montoya?
No, no.
Alderman Ruthenberg?
No.
Alderman Fairwall?
Yes.
Alderman McGee?
Yes.
Alderman Carr?
No.
Alderman Roll?
Yes.
Motion to table has failed. Back to the regular motion. Clerk, please do the roll call. Yes is to approve the six B. No is to deny, just for clarification. Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Montoya?
Aye.
Alderman Ruthenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Fairwall?
In frustration.
Alderman McGee? Alderman Carr?
Aye.
Alderman Roll?
No. Yes.
Thank you.
Going forward, the administration, please make sure all documentation is included in general meeting packets, even if it was included in a committee of the whole. I know I've seen it, it's not included in this matter. Thank you. Moving on. I bear in mind, where we have. All right, so. An ordinance for the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing approving the execution of a purchase and sale agreement binding between the city and Farmers scripts, you know, Incorporated for the vacant motor bank located at 13001 to 1309 Gregory Street. Is there a motion? Alderman McGee, second one, Alderman Johnson, on the question. Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alderman Johnson?
Aye.
Alderman Montoya?
Aye.
Alderman Ruthenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Fairwall?
Aye.
Alderman McGee?
Aye.
Alderman Carr?
Aye.
Alderman Roll?
Aye.
Seven eyes, Your Honor.
Okay, resolution, City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing approval of purchase and sale agreement binding between the city and Virginia Gibson for the vacant home at 2920 on 139 Place. They were the highest bidder. Is there a motion? Alderman Johnson, is there a second? Alderman Roll, on the question. Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alderman Johnson?
Aye.
Alderman Montoya?
Aye.
Alderman Ruthenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Fairwall?
Aye.
Alderman McGee?
Aye.
Alderman Carr?
Aye.
Alderman Roll?
Aye.
Seven eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right. L, resolution for the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing approving the execution of a lease agreement binding between the city and, try to pronounce it, remote, with cuts, LLC, also known as the Blue Island Beer Company, 13377 on Western Avenue. Is there a motion? Alderman Johnson is your second, Alderman Carr on the question. Alderman Roll.
I apologize. I'm just curious what precipitated this lease agreement. This is a formalization of the arrangement that the cities have since acquiring the property?
I can go through the whole thing as we did in executive. We tried meeting with the owners of the beer company. They refused to sit down to meet, except for one owner. This communication, we've been asking for a meeting for a month now. We went back and forth through email regarding what they would like in a lease. I had the attorney put those into a lease, and this is where we're at now.
So with the current tenants, are they not in support of this draft, or we don't know?
No, a hundred percent, we are. We got it sent to us with changes from one of the owners.
Yes, I've been communicating with partners, and they've signed up.
What percentage of the business ownership does the partner in question represent, you know?
They've never turned over ownership. Last I heard, it was twenty-some owners.
So we don't know the right, why? If it's a majority representation.
When there's, when it's executed, we require that they show the proper
No, I, I just meant, as far as whether or not we're going to be starting on a different draft in the future.
We gave them a boilerplate draft that they took as gospel without sitting down and meeting with us. So this is, at least we got some communication from two of the owners that are the most active as of Friday. And they have a sixty-day period to reject this, I believe, right?
Thirty or sixty-day period. And if they reject it, then potentially another draft will come before us.
Yes.
The issue was
I think you guys are going to say drop it in sixty days. This is
The reason that sixty-day provision was added is representative of beer company had concerns with if the were being performed, so it was not up to their standards. Said, I'll tell you what, we'll give you a pre-hand sixty days. We can terminate one way if you're not they were going to accept.
And again, this represents a twenty percent of the ownership's buy-in. And in theory, the majority of the company could upon review reject it, we would just be potentially approving another draft on the road. Is that the process?
What is explained to me?
Put this in front of that once we vote enough.
Well, just to be clear, no, not one person owns fifty percent of the company. We do know that. Two people that own the majority stake has seen this.
Okay. I used to mean the goal though is to get something that, you know, majority ownership signs and agrees to, right?
So, we were communicating with Brian, with the and my, at least, it was via email, so it wasn't in person, but my understanding is they both signed up.
So, sorry, to be clear, attorney, you believe that this draft you're rolling on does have the support of Mr. Schinkos and Mr. Fairwall?
What was communicated to us, I was on the emails?
Via email.
Yes.
So, was he in front of me? No. I cannot, I think it's reasonable to accept the emails and report based on what they're saying in emails. Like I said, when it comes to execution, we will ensure that the product lock is a resolution from the LLC.
Or they can continue not having a lease at all. Either way. Or they can continue not having a lease at all. Either way.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alden Johnson?
Aye.
Alden Montoya?
Aye.
Alden Ruthenberg?
Aye.
Alden Fairwell?
Aye.
Alden McGee?
Aye.
Alden Carr?
Aye.
Alden Roll?
Aye.
Seven eyes, Your Honor.
There is.
M, resolution for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing approving the execution of an agreement binding between the city and EMS management and consultants related to medical, transportation services on the hehest of the five departments. So if there's any questions, we can uh, chief's here, I see that. Okay. Is there a motion? Alden Ruthenberg, your second, Alden Roll on the question. Now, clerk, please do the roll call.
Alden Johnson?
Aye.
Alden Montoya?
Aye.
Alden Ruthenberg?
Aye.
Alden Fairwell?
Aye.
Alden McGee?
Aye.
Alden Carr?
Aye.
Alden Roll?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
There is. Under N, an ordinance for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, requiring vehicle traffic to stop four-way stop at hundred twenty-third and Highland Avenue and providing penalties for violation thereof. Is there a motion? Alden Carr, second by Alden Fairwell, on the question. Alden Fairwell.
I just would like to say thank you to whoever.
Alden Carr.
Thank you, Alden Carr. Nearly been killed there a few times.
And just on top of this, we, it, we're compiling a list of speed bumps we'd like to add for next year's construction. And I know they're planning to add more on twenty-third. So, um, and I know most Aldermen have sent additional speed bump requests that Travis has been keeping ahead of a common. Any other questions? Now, clerk, please do the roll call.
Alden Johnson?
Aye.
Alden Montoya?
Aye.
Alden Ruthenberg?
Aye.
Alden Fairwell?
Aye.
Alden McGee?
Aye.
Alden Carr?
Aye.
Alden Roll?
Aye.
Seven eyes, Your Honor.
An ordinance for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing approving two variances related to accessory shed on property located twenty-five oh-two Cocklett Street. It's a PZBA. Is there a motion? Alden Montoya, second by Alden Ruthenberg on the question. Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alden Johnson?
Aye.
Alden Montoya?
Aye.
Alden Ruthenberg?
Aye.
Alden Fairwell?
Aye.
Alden McGee?
Aye.
Alden Carr?
Aye.
Alden Roll?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
There is. Next one's also PZBA. An ordinance for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, granting a special use permit uh, by them tires and rims to operate a motor vehicle repair juice in the C two commercial Iowa district, one twenty-one oh-two Western. I think they're just changing ownership. Is that correct, administration? They've changed owner, same use, change ownership. Is there a motion? Motion for Alden Fairwell, second by Alden McGee on the question. Clerk, please do the, on the question, Alden Montoya.
Uh, so if you're gonna have like, uh, more cars present?
I think, uh, when we have our own administration of the package, it's just changing ownership, the exact same use. If, and I believe PZBA, because I, I talk to them regularly, knows the city stance on additional cars in Western. Any other questions? Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alden Johnson?
Aye.
Alden Montoya?
Aye.
Alden Ruthenberg?
Aye.
Alden Fairwell?
Aye.
Alden McGee?
Aye.
Alden Carr?
Aye.
Alden Roll?
Aye.
Seven eyes, Your Honor.
Motion, there is. Under Q, an ordinance for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, providing for the issuance of one point six one million six hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred eleven dollars in general obligation for this tax round series twenty twenty-five for the purpose of writing funds for various water system improvements and certain other capital improvements for the city. Is there a motion? Motion for Alden McGee, second by Alden Carr on the question. Alden Roll.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, uh, again, for this vote, uh, and the one following, this is the one spending plan that this council has reviewed. We have no basis of comparison. We don't know what it looks like to borrow less for a plan that has us seeing three million dollars. Twenty-five percent of the amount we are borrowing to do the work and associated interest and fees, and we have done no comparison. We have not looked at other means of borrowing. We have not looked at matching funds. We have not done a detailed review of the spending proposals. Um, I am not against borrowing, uh, for water infrastructure, not at all. But, uh, before we add this much debt and its obligations to the city of Blue Island's books, uh, there is a certain amount of due diligence that we owe the residents who put us here. And so that's why I cannot support these.
Any other questions? Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alden Johnson?
Aye.
Alden Montoya?
Aye.
Alden Ruthenberg?
Aye.
Alden Fairwell?
With our fiduciary responsibility in mind, no.
Alden McGee?
Aye.
Alden Carr?
Aye.
Alden Roll?
No. I'm also voting, please say yes, clerk.
Next, R, an ordinance for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing the issuance of water revenue bonds in lieu of general obligation alternate revenue bonds of an aggregate principal amount not to exceed ten million dollars pursuant to the Illinois Local Government Debt Reform Act and the Illinois Municipal Code for the purpose of paying the cost the construction of various water system improvements and certain other capital improvements within the city, providing for the publication of a notice of intent with respect thereto. This one still needs another motion eventually. This is only halfway through the process of this motion. Is there a motion? Alden Montoya is your second, Alden Carr on the question. Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alden Johnson?
Aye.
Alden Montoya?
Aye.
Alden Ruthenberg?
Aye.
Alden Fairwell?
No.
Alden McGee?
Aye.
Alden Carr?
Aye.
Alden Roll?
No.
Mayor Blalow.
Six two.
And now John Kisperek is here. I know Travis is here. I know Mike is here. They all want to talk about the necessity of all this and the IAPA needs for this. I want to reiterate all that stuff because it passed, but I'm placing a vote. I rarely do place a vote if I'm entitled to a voter's mayor because I highly need the, the water improvements have begun in the city. We are past due. I'm replacing our tanks, modifying the water system, improving our water system. It's something people don't see, but it needs to be done. Everybody likes streets game. Everybody likes streets being repaired, but what's underground is much more costly and long-term and expensive, and this is only covering a fraction, a small fraction of what needs to be done. So I highly support this. And Kisperek has done his diligence. I've known John for a long time. I didn't know we want to speak on this, John, at all. We're good. This is going to be a multi-year project. At the very least, all four tanks, yes, four tanks. I didn't even know we had a fourth tank in the city. We had two elevated and two on the ground that had to be recoded, repaired, multiple issues with them. So I place a vote in support of this, even though it wasn't necessary. City clerk?
All right. This weekend's going to be very busy. We have Blue Island five K walk run. There's still time to sign up. And I believe you checked in the maple tree van, maple wood vans. You can still sign up. There's tree planting begins at Kitty Corral Saturday at nine AM. Sunday is a Halloween, one to three at Memorial Park. Bring your dogs, dress them up, lots of fun. October twenty-fifth, we are still in need for some truck or treaters. If you'd like to participate in the truck or treat, please see, um, the blog. You can see me. I'll take care of it or one of our park district employees. Oh, is that too late? Scarecrow time. Watch Blue Island start to build scarecrows around town. Is that too late to sign up and build a scarecrow? Day the dead is approaching, November first, we're doing a lot of planning. We have free vans and a lot of surprises on November first from five to nine. Um, you have any questions? Stop by and see me in the city clerk's office.
Thank you, city clerk. Come on. I don't belong there.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, are we asking for a motion? Um, to approve the August twenty twenty-five treasurer's report, please.
A motion, Alden McGee, second by Alden Fairwell.
September, oh, it's an August.
September. Alden Fairwell, second on the question. Alden Fairwell.
Yeah, treasurer, I noticed the, you know, federal funds balance analysis report is constantly declining over time. And I, I don't know, I can't say this for a fact, but it's six million, nine hundred thousand dollars, maybe the lowest I've ever seen. So I just make sure that you're comfortable with our obligations based on West Side.
Give my answer. If not, I can just state the obvious. Second tax bills haven't come out yet. I, that's an influx of more than what you see here that's missing off this report. Please do the roll call.
Alden Johnson?
Aye.
Alden Montoya?
Aye.
Alden Ruthenberg?
Aye.
Alden Fairwell?
Aye.
Alden McGee?
Aye.
Alden Carr?
Aye.
Alden Roll?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
Motion. First, we're giving up.
Uh, so first of all, I would like to say thank you to the Eisenhower students that I see out there. This has been a long meeting. Guys, and, um, thank you very much for coming and seeing our principal and our, all our bosses were here tonight. And, um, and also just to see the smiling faces here. So thanks. And, um, also I have an announcement from, um, one of our Eisenhower students who are leading Voices for Change. Um, it's Youth Violence Awareness Forum. It's October twenty-sixth, Sunday at one PM. One thousand South Costner Avenue, Oaklawn, Illinois. And it's featuring a panel discussion, special guest speakers and community voices united for change. Um, if anybody has any questions, I have a number here for one of our counselors at Eisenhower that has more information. We'd love to see everybody. Um, if you could please make time in your, your schedule, the, um, student would love to see everyone there. That's all I've got.
Yeah. City clerk, do you have any thoughts?
No.
Yeah. The administration? Automatic announcements, comments, reports, all of them roll.
Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to address the vote from the last session and to kick off a high rate reel. Uh, last session, we voted to award a no big contract for work at the, the building, the Blue Island Beer Company building. I have no idea what the reasoning is for issuing a no big contract. I, I just regret my vote. I admittedly did not catch that. But, you know, I'll hold. We just voted to uphold mass surveillance with absolutely no policy in place first, which is a repeat of what we've just done the last three years. We're going to sell twelve million dollars in bonds absent any sort of adequate uh, analysis to deem that that is the most financially responsible path. No big contracts. Uh, and we never even actually looked at this year's appropriation like we have, uh, the last three years. There's not enough time. Uh, the administration has not made time, and none of you have asked. So I, you know, it's, it's a shame. I, I hate to, you know, be that voice in this room, but uh, it's unconscionable, uh, to me, the degree to which suddenly this council is hands up on what should be enormously important decisions. Uh, but mostly I'd just like to say I regret that vote. I would retract it or alter it if I could. Um, and I do think it's up to the administration to offer their reasoning for issuing no big contracts. Uh, specifically to a construction company owned by the same restaurant group that we're going to be doing business with. Uh, if there's a legitimate reason, which I'm sure there is, then the public is owed that. Thank you.
Administration, do you want to respond? Mayor Alden, Alden Johnson? Yes. Um, yeah, go ahead. Alden, Alden Johnson, hold on.
I'll just say, just as a quick review of, um, the vote that was taken last week in regards to the property, one thirty-three fifty-seven Western. This is the, uh, what we commonly refer to as the Blue Island Beer Company, but just, um, because it does seem to be, um, you know, some, uh, some trouble remembering what happened, wouldn't work. Um, we have been, I think, I, the administration's been very transparent about our intentions here. We've had multiple meetings. We were in executive. Uh, the last executive, we spelled it out pretty clearly. Uh, there have been three investments in the city-owned property to date. Uh, one was for concrete flooring work. We brought it to this council. We got your approval. Uh, the other was for a roof bid. The other was for a windows bid. We brought all those to the council. Um, we were very transparent. We were very upfront about what we were doing and why, but just to do it one more time. Um, this is a city-owned property. We had originally planned on an idea of a restaurant company out of Joliet. We're all familiar with this, but I don't need to reiterate all of it. The lease that we had originally negotiated, uh, didn't work. All right? So we came back to the council and said, here's what we'd like to do. We'd like to continue doing work on our city-owned building. Maybe we can weave this together into a deal with this restaurant company in the future. Maybe we can't, but this is still a city-owned property that's economically dead right now, and we'd like to bring it back to life, as we are with a number of others, these, these things. So we brought it to council. Alden Monroe, I know you were not present in the executive meeting when we had a little bit more of a fleshed out discussion about this. Um, but the reasons and rationale is that it's a city-owned building. Uh, we decided, uh, we, we did ask to waive, uh, the competitive, competitive bid for price and expediency purposes. Um, you had, it was in the package. It was right there to see. So we didn't hide anything, never have, never will. That's what happened with this building so far. Nothing else has happened. Nothing else will happen without this council's approval. Any accusations that we have been anything other than transparent are false. That's all I have to say about it.
Set additional notes again?
So we put it on the agenda to waive the competitive bidding. You voted for it. Sorry you didn't read, sorry you didn't do your homework, but the administration didn't do anything wrong. We've been transparent the entire time through, Alden.
Treasurer, read it.
Okay, so this is a I know I'm out of line there, you know, it's an Alden Roll comment, but I just wanted to, um, uh, based on, um, Alden Roll's comment regarding the policy, so that this was entered into without policy. So I wanted to ask, will the policy that was passed previously be continued for this new? Right, for the new, uh, contract? And can it be? Um, can the council add to it if they knew? Do you understand my question? It was very chatty.
Yeah, I, I, I understand where you come from on this. The policy that was put in place, again, by predecessor, I get it, we own it now. It's our policy. It is not a policy that aligns with Lex Paul, who our policy manual is with. It's somebody else wrote it. I'm not against it. I'm not for it. I have reviewed it. It can be applied. It will be applied. And quite honestly, since we started this conversation with Flock, the police department, being myself and Chief Slattery, have made significant strides in going forward and enforcing this policy and making sure we are gaining compliance through our police department. We have removed access to the national lookup. We've removed access to out-of-state agencies. Uh, Flock has decided to remove access to basically the task force. Chief Slattery and I went to a forum last week in El Crow Village where we talked about these specific issues with a number of other police departments where this is a concern, and we demonstrated we are addressing these concerns. Last week, we, or in the last month, I'm sorry, we've changed the way people access the, uh, system. It is requiring a case number and a reason for your search. The reason is a dropdown menu. So nobody can free type anything that they want in there. You're going to follow our guidelines in it. We've also implemented training for everybody. If you're a user that can only, uh, get alerts, which is a pretty common thing. It's a ding on the phone and you check it and you read the plate. Everybody went through training on that. If you have access to search, everybody went through training on that. If you're an administrator, we've gone through training on it. We are making strides with this. So I don't, the, the notion that we are not taking steps, uh, is a little offensive. Sorry. But this is the, uh, the profession that I've been in for the last twenty-one years. So those are the type of things I do take offense to when those kind of ideas are put out there. Everybody that was in this room tonight, the award we got tonight, that was all work by following our policy to the letter on how we stopped that vehicle last week. So yes, to answer your question, we are abiding by the policy, and if we were deficient anywhere, we are making strides to make sure we correct.
And is there a possibility to get a report, maybe a committee in the whole, as to, um,
I, I mean, I Yeah, any, any reports that come through, and I know the committees are different now since it's gone from fourteen to seven because there used to be a politics activity. But, uh, reports that we do on Flock, uh, we can do them quarterly, monthly, however we do it, we follow the direction of the administration. Again, we serve at the, the discretion of the mayor and how we do these things. So the administration is forward our reports. How things go from there, how we just, how we sit down and talk about it, how much detail we go into, that's a decision for, quite honestly, people ahead of me.
The reason why I ask is I did think that Alden Monroe did ask Alden Monroe, did he ask for some kind of reporting passed regarding Flock?
Yes. And with all due respect, Commander, it's, uh, at least on my part, an allegation of wrongdoing or negligence. Um, if we are sharing access for that, that data to other departments, security is only as good as each department's own internal policy. Right? And so the concern for me is a database owned by a private company, managed by a private company that includes our resident's data as well as all their other clients. Uh, so I just want to be clear. Um, my advice is just that we understand matters of access and data privacy before we sort of allow the use of these things, absolute policy. Uh, I just wanted to clarify my position.
Well, at one point to that, I would like to mention, um, and, and I guess this is where my point of view comes on this. The only people that have access to those license plates are the police.
Sure, but can we document other law enforcement, say, also, like every time they want to access?
Sure, but, but but the point I'm making, yes, it is the positive when they access our cameras and what they're searching for. The point I'm making is the license plates are accessible to the police. If you notice in the reports that we started providing to you, we do not provide license plates or vehicle information anymore. We are essentially following the FOIA law. If you notice in the reports that we started providing to you, we do not provide license plates or vehicle information anymore, we are essentially following the FOIA law. If one of you came to us and said, I want a FOIA and I want a report on every car that went by this camera, you would get a car, you would probably get a report of date and times, and a whole lot of redaction. Because unless somebody's actually charged with a crime, we're not gonna provide you any information. Though, those are the FOIA regulations, and the attorney can correct me if I'm wrong in that, but that's essentially what we would do. So nobody has access to this but us, this is law enforcement sensitive material, I'm very big proponent on that. There are three Ls that are allowed to see our information. Law enforcement, lawyers, being like state's attorneys and defense attorneys.
Man, do you feel the department is ready to pass an audit from the state's attorney's office regarding historically used and monitoring of access?
That, that is a very large question there, because it, it, sure, sure, but is it including the efforts that we made in the last couple of months?
I, that would be a question for the state's attorney's office.
Absolutely, so to that extent, not knowing the timeframe, I can't answer the question.
So you're not aware what timeframe they test for, and the other?
No, but it wasn't state's attorney's office, it was the, uh, only secretary of state that was running the audits, the attorney general's. Big deal.
Any other questions, one commander's up to roll.
Hi, I've got a different question.
All right, any questions regarding Alderman, who matters up to see? Alderman Johnson.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman.
So I just wanted to clarify something, um, Alderman Roll asked if the contract had been lent to a company that was financially involved with, owned by or somehow involved with the restaurant company, is that correct? The, 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 uh, the contract we approved last time for the work is with a company that is financially tied to, uh.
It was the same general contractor that we originally gained, so, so yes, there's a relationship to the general contractor and the, and the, what was going to be the restaurant owner might still be in the future, we don't know. But it's the same general contractor, that, that, that we were building off of the same plan that we had, we had started months ago.
Now, I saw in the packets that you had made multiple quotes for the same, or, the lowest quote from the general contract, right?
Correct, and those quotes were, the, the names were listed all on there, again, nothing was ever hidden on this, it was all transparent.
There's like two or, two or three quotes of when.
I'll have to show the paper work again, if the council would like to see it, but yes.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Johnson.
Yes. This, my, uh, comment, uh, Halloween funk retreat, John D. Reed's Recreation Center, October the thirty-first, uh, four to seven, and I wanted to talk to Watch Group Thirty-Seven and any other Watch Group that would like to be involved in my, uh, new teen, uh, celebration next year. Uh, but they walked out, but anybody else on the welcome. And I just wanted to say something to, uh, to the local union, uh, seventy-three, uh, I'm also a teenager, have been for quite a few years. I believe in you. I stand strong with you, and if anything that's being done wrong, if anything myself personally could do to help, please reach out to the club. That's it.
Thank you. Any other Alderman? Okay, Matt, we need, or you do a adjourn. One chairman, I'll send Alderman Roll on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose.